This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, we'll call to order. Uh, 5:08? It's okay, we'll make that time up. Uh, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the third and final interview with our finalist candidate for the superintendent position at East Hampton Public Schools. I'm going to briefly roll call in. Sam.
Uh, Sam Hunter here.
Eric.
Eric Gagnant here.
Laura Scott present. Megan.
Amy Harvey here.
Ben.
Ben Hershey here.
Linda.
Linda Markey here.
Thank you. Okay, so just a brief note to the public. Uh, we're going to begin this evening with Dr. Bosch who is joining us with a, an opportunity for a five-minute introductory statement. Uh, then we are going to move into the first of seven questions. We've roughly allotted about 10 minutes for each question. Dr. Bosch may have 10 minutes worth of talking points for that. If not, we also may have an opportunity for follow-up or discussion. Each of those questions will be moderated by a different member of the committee. And being that we are starting a bit late, I give the floor to Dr. Bosch. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. It is been such an incredible day and process. I've met so many wonderful people. I just appreciate you opening your doors and allowing me to interact with family members and community members, students and staff. It's been just awesome and I very much appreciate the process, so. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about, in my opening, a little bit about who I am, my leadership style, and what really drives me as a leader. Because I think it's really important. I'm going to talk a little bit about my experiences to my questions. But I think identifying your why as a leader is really important. Um, and it really grounds you in the work. It's what motivates you. It's what keeps you coming to work every day. Um, and my why is really about cultivating that sense of belonging and how important that is to me as a person. Um, I went through, I, I shared this with the screening committee too. And, you know, it, it is my why. I went through high school. I went through my entire K-12 experience. Just, you know, kind of going through the motions of school. You're not really feeling like I had a place, not really feeling like connected. You know, just an average student doing the average things during school. And then I graduated. I applied to one college and I got in. And, you know, I was sitting in class and my professor, I'm, I'm writing, you know, attentive, you know, just being me. And my professor said, you know, "Michelle, can we see you after a class?" And I'm like, "What did I do now? He's going to send me to the writing center, make me do some assignment over." And then he said, "You know, I think you're really smart. And I think, I really, I think you are working really hard." And, you know, you're like, look around and you're like, "I'm sorry, is there somebody else here? You think I'm smart?" It was somebody I respected and somebody who I thought was really smart saw me as a smart person. And he's like, "I'm in charge of the Model UN team. I think you should join it. I think you'd be great." I was like, "You want me to be part of something?" And that moment like changed my life. And I was, you know, you sit up a little straighter, you're like, "Wait, I am smart. I, I can do this and somebody wants me to be a part of something?" And that really became my why in education. I want no child to have to wait until college to have that experience. When you think about our little ones coming in at pre-K. And I want them to know that they're brilliant, they're amazing, they have so much to contribute. They're part of something so much bigger and that their possibilities are limitless. And I think it's so important that kids know and feel that and that leadership and teachers and people around them are letting them know. So my why is to make sure that every kid knows that they are amazing and that they can do whatever and from a very, very young age. So that's, that's my why. Uh, my second sort of other why is more personal. I, I'm a mother of four children. Uh, my husband has, came with two children, so, you know, just coming together with having four children, two blended family. Um, and really just knowing that each of my kids, I have to approach them differently. They're very unique. They all have different things that drive them. They have different ways that they learn. I have to treat each and approach them differently. So those moments really shaped my leadership style because I, I realized, "Oh wow, everybody needs this approach." You can't handle every single person in the same way. You need to approach them where they, where they're at and engage them in a conversation, help facilitate to learn how you can really reach them, to tap their potential. So I think for me, those are two roles and two moments that have really shaped and helped create who I am as a leader. So I think it's really important that I share, you know, that. And as I've gone through this application process and reading more about East Hampton Public Schools, I think it was also important to me that my vision and mission aligns with the vision and mission of East Hampton Public Schools. And I gave you a 90-day plan because for me, it's important that you know and you see it in writing what my plans are for 30, 60, and 90 days in the district. Because I think, you know, not only can you hear it, but you can see it and read a little bit more about it. And my, my values are really aligned around students thriving. It's very important to me and I think that aligns with my why. Um, diversity enriches, enriches us all because it is so important to, we have this rich tapestry. We're a school community. People are coming together from all different backgrounds and experiences. And how do we cultivate that in our schools? And how do we leverage our diversity and our unique, the uniqueness that everybody brings to the table? I think collaboration and partnerships are key. We can't do it alone. And we need everybody to come together to make educational experiences awesome. And when we lean into collaboration and we're leaning into partnerships, we may make sure everybody has a seat at the table. That's really important. You need to bring people to the table. You need to work with other people. And you need to lean into other people's expertise. And that's something I believe as a leader, um, it's very important to me to make sure that, um, we're gaining those perspectives because it's very important that we lean into those perspectives. Um, I also believe that growth requires commitment. And that is something that I think it's, I took away from the educator evaluation system because, you know, you have to be reflective as a leader. You have to be willing to take feedback. You have to be willing to grow. You have to be willing to think about innovative approaches to things because we can't keep doing things the way we've always done them because it's the way we've always done them. We have to be innovative. It doesn't mean that everything we've been doing isn't working, but change requires us all to be flexible in our thinking and to be innovative in our approaches. And I believe that safe and welcoming environments are essential. When you feel like you belong, you will thrive and you will bring your entire self into school. That's so important. We don't want just pieces of students at school. We want them to feel like they can bring their entire selves into the classroom because that is the power of learning. So, thank you. Just a little bit about.
Well said. Um, Eric, would you like to start us off with question one?
All right, question one. Um, so, welcome. Thank you so much for that introduction. Now that you've been around our district for a little while and done some research, um, from what you've learned about our district, what would you describe as our greatest assets and strengths? And what are some of our major challenges? Um, if you want to discuss that kind of building up from the little list of pre-Ks through middle school up to high school and then just on the broader district-wide?
I think, um, some of the, the unique.
Really briefly, do you want me to give you a two or three-minute warning?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Go ahead.
For sure. Um, I think some of the things that really attracted me to sit in front of you today, I think, um, the pre-K to eight school is something that I think is amazing. I love that students aren't transitioning from, you know, elementary to middle. I think it's important that kids see the same familiar faces and experiences. So I think that's something that I love about this district. Um, the facilities just going around have been absolutely incredible. And that speaks to how you value education in this community, which is very important. And, you know, just walking into the schools and thinking about, um, seeing all the signs on, on the walls about the clubs and opportunities and talking with the kids and hearing them talk about what they're participating in, I think speaks to, um, the community's commitment to enriching student lives through arts and through individual opportunities for kids. Um, I, the course catalog for the high school is very impressive, offering a lot of opportunities. The kids today talked about some of the courses that are engaging them in their learning and that they think are, you know, what's keeping them engaged in school and involved. So I think, you know, having a very tight-knit community, you know, 1331 students is awesome, right? You can, you know, when driving around today with a superintendent, talking about students and actually like, we're talking about a student who I met in class. And just to get down to that level, the student level is so powerful and so important. And it was so, it just great to hear, you know, talking about programs that are needed for a particular student and being able to help meet their needs. And, you know, for East Hampton, when you say "all," you really mean "all." And that is just so powerful. Um, thinking about, you know, from pre-K, some of the strengths, offering full-day pre-K, um, the Tiny Tots program for the high school. What an amazing opportunity for high school students and for littles to be in classrooms with and seeing mentors and adults and just being in, in our schools. I think it's a unique opportunity. That's a great, I love that you're offering full-day integrated pre-K. Um, and, you know, I think for, a challenge for that is expanding. We definitely want to provide access to high-quality instructional programming for pre-K because it's such a strong foundation. So how do we leverage resources and partnerships with the community to expand pre-K? Would be, you know, something to consider. Um, for elementary, um, amazing facilities. Um, I think, um, some of the curriculum that I'm very comfortable with are the same curriculums that you're using in your elementary schools, being a reader, being a writer. SIPS as an intervention, um, we are currently using in my district. So being able to have that, uh, knowledge of the curriculum and what it looks like in classroom practice is something I was really excited about as well. I think you have some screeners to get data on students and how they're performing. Um, learning about the Win Black and how it's used at the, um, from K to, K to eight was great today. And how do we use that as an opportunity to help strengthen our MTSS work? What is our Tier One? What is our Tier Two and Tier Three? How can we make sure that students are getting what they need when they're in front of us? So those are, um, from the elementary level. The administration, strong administration. You have high teacher retention rates. Um, you know, those are all very important things to school culture. And when you're retaining teachers, you can really have that strong school culture, which I think is very important. Um, some of the challenges, thinking about, you know, post-pandemic recovery has been a challenge across the state. Um, and looking at some of the data, the ELA data was, you know, just something I think that needs to be taken a look at. I learned today that you're looking at some other curriculums. And I think that's great. When you have high-quality instructional materials in front of kids combined with high-quality educators, that's, that's where the magic happens in the classroom. And that's really what you want to see. And it sent a signal to me that if you're trying something that isn't working, that you're willing to explore new opportunities, even if it means learning a new curriculum. So that was something that, you know, is also an opportunity for growth, that you're constantly looking to improve and find ways to do that. So kudos to your administration for taking that step because it is a hard step. Middle school, um, the social justice PLCs, I think is really great. Talking to the administration today and learning about the specialized programs that you have for students to meet their needs, um, was just great. And I think it speaks to the culture that you're trying to establish in your schools and to make sure kids feel like they're in programs that support, support them academically, but socially and emotionally because we know more than ever, kids need that. And you are willing to meet their needs by creating these specialized programs. I think there's some opportunity to look at, um, some science curriculum. Saw that you're using mystery science, but how do we lean into, um, the NGSS standards and make sure that we have curriculum that's aligned to the standards? So just thinking about that as an area of opportunity. Um, the high school, again, there's a lot to be proud of there. You have, um, you know, course offerings, AP courses. You have pathways and opportunities for kids. I saw some internship experiences that they can engage in. So just a well-rounded sort of meeting kids' needs, um, clubs and opportunities after school, sports programming, you know, good things happening. And a tight-knit community meeting with those students today. They're, they're a tough group.
Yeah.
And, um, it, they, they were asking the tough questions today. And I, I left there like, "Wow, that's amazing that they're willing to sit in front of me and say, 'What are you going to do about this? And what are you going to do about that if you're our superintendent? And will we know who you are and will we be seeing you?'" They're like, "We go to lunch with Mrs. B. Are you going to have lunch with us?" "Sure." So I, I think, you know, there's, kids are empowered to be themselves and that was very apparent today. And I think, um, thinking about the graduation rate, 88%? Um, great, but, you know, when we're talking about 88%, we're talking about 1331 students. It, every, every kid, there, there are students behind that data. And that to me is something that, you know, we, we need to be at 100% and we need to do everything we can to make sure that we're not losing kids. And so I think that would be just an area of, of thoughtfulness that, you know, in some programming or, you know, what do we need for wraparound why? Finding the why and then addressing that why. Um, overall, um, I think, you know, it's a very tight-knit community. It's exciting to hear about all of the great things and innovation that's happening at the schools, um, access to technology and, you know, I think just hearing even from the kids today about their experiences, they are proud to be part of East Hampton Public Schools. And even the staff, just really like the front, front office staff, sitting there talking, just talking about how East Hampton has done right by her children. And what a great way to just, you know, be sitting there and thinking about how proud everybody is and I could be a part of this community and to be also proud of this community alongside you.
Thank you. Um, does anyone have a follow-up question? That, to that question? That's fine. That was, I mean, it was comprehensive and complete, so that's fine.
It's a pretty breathtaking assessment of a district in this amount of. Sam, how long do you think it took you to kind of come to grips with literally by grade level? Here's what you're doing, right? And here, everything you listed are things we have discussed. And that you picked up on that.
Appreciate that, sure.
Pretty, wow, okay. Moving on, yes. Question, question two. Um, okay, Dr. Bosch, please discuss how you approach and deal with conflict in the various arenas of school management. Uh, for example, administration, staff, students and families. How do you define positive culture in a school community? And how do you build and support that?
Conflict is inevitable, right? It's going to happen. And as much as we love, love, you know, trying to make sure that we're all, you know, happy and confident and comfortable and, but conflict will, will happen. But I think the defining, um, moment is how you handle that conflict. And that is what matters. And I think when you, um, approach conflict and you take, you start by listening, right? Gathering the information, listening, making sure that you are hearing all aspects, taking that breath to not come to a solution or not come to, like, your perceived notion of what is correct, or really thinking about, "Okay, what am I hearing? What is the context for what I'm hearing?" And, you know, there are other people involved in that. So get, spending the time to gather the facts and information. I think, um, being solution-oriented is also very important. Coming from, "Okay, we have, we've encountered this, this problem. We have this conflict. You know, we have gathered the information. We need to have a solution now. So how do we act, you know, not, you know, in the best interest of children?" It always has to be about being in the best interest of children. You know, I think when we start to engage in conflict at, you know, various levels, I think sometimes it, we're talking about adults, but we really need to be continuously focused on shifting that to the students, right? And how are our decisions going to impact students? And I think we also have to be very transparent in that when we come up with a solution and we have a proposed solution, we have to be transparent. We have to let people know where we think we're heading with this solution so that there is very clear and consistent communication, that people know that there was a follow-up that happened and that, you know, we came to consensus and here's what happened. So you just have to be very clear when you're engaging in these, that you're listening, you're looking for a solution, you're going to work on that solution. You have to also let people know that you're committed, you know, when you do find that solution, to seeing that solution through. Oftentimes, you know, there's a solution and you're like, "Whatever happened to that? Remember we said we were going to do that?" But making sure that you're following up and that you're, you're communicating what that follow-up was is very important to close that loop so you don't just have all of these sort of open loops of communication. Um, you know, and I, I think about conflicts and, you know, I think from like the district perspective, a recent conflict and, you know, just give you an example. Um, we've had this longstanding partnership with an organization. And I, you know, met with them as a chief instructional officer. And I said, you know, "Here's our expectations. Here's our priorities for the year." And I was very clear about what our priorities were. And they, "Okay, yes, those are also our priorities, but, you know, we, we might have some of our own." I said, "Well, you know, if you're going to be working with us, these are our priorities and, you know, these are our expectations." So we were very, laid out the conversation at the beginning of the year. Priorities for the year, here's how we're going to meet them. And then I was getting some feedback from some principals saying, "Oh, they have, you know, they thought I should do this or they wanted me to work on that." And I was like, "Hmm, that's, I thought I was pretty clear about what I wanted from this partnership." So I met with them again and I said, "Oh, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering why you decided to, um, uh, have this be a goal for this school." And they said, "Well, you know, we, we did this and it was kind of aligned." And I said, "Well, I, I was really clear." You know, "But you have to think about the investment that you've made. You know, you, you have, there's, there's budgetary considerations in this. So, you know, give them another opportunity. I'm very clear. Here's my expectations, you know, and here are our priorities." And so we go back, I'm still hearing sort of the same thing. And, you know, I brought the, the, them back and I said, "You know, I think we're going to have to part ways on this because you're not aligned to our vision and our mission and our priorities for our district." And it was a tough conversation. This is a partnership that had been going on for many years. And I think it's really important that, you know, when we, we do encounter some conflict, that we're grounded in our vision and our mission and our priorities. So when we start to deviate from those, that's when, you know, conflict and confusion arises. So I think it's important that we also address them, give people an opportunity to revisit those expectations. And then, you know, if you are not aligned and we don't see this really, this partnership coming to fruition, that we're willing to address it regardless of sort of the implications. It required members of my team to have to step up to take on additional work. But we had that meeting. We said, "All right, this is what's going to happen." And my team was prepared to meet that challenge, to do the work that needed to be done. Um, and, you know, the, it, the decision really came down to assessing kids, right? We, we are like, I think we're over-assessing students. We want to limit the number of assessments that, that we're introducing to kids. And they had some assessment benchmarks that they wanted to land on, but, you know, we were sticking true to our values about thinking about assessment and what kids need. So I think that's kind of, you know, an example of a conflict. And, you know, it wasn't easy, but I think we're, we acted in the best interests of students at that time. So, um, I think, you know, it's important that whenever we do uncover sort of conflicts that people have access to resources. You know, training and professional development are so important that when a conflict does arise, that we have a plan to address it because it might just be one conflict, but it might be a conflict, a conflict that other people may encounter. So we want to make sure that we also are making plans for training, professional development and resources to address, you know, sort of whatever it is. Because if it's a trend, we want to be prepared to address that as a whole staff and to make sure, you know, when we're giving training and professional development, everybody benefits, right? You're gaining new knowledge and skills and experiences. And that's really also important, that ongoing training. I think also an important part of addressing conflict is through coaching and, um, and constant feedback and reflection. So I think for me, I'm somebody who loves feedback. Um, I was in charge of the educator evaluation system for Springfield Public Schools. And from rolling it out to getting everybody the training and support they needed. So for me, it was, you know, I, I love this feedback. And I love watching people grow and develop. So as a leader, that's what brings me joy, when I see people experiencing, um, joy in their positions and they're feeling successful because I'm clear, not only about their roles and responsibilities, but that I'm supporting them. And if we do encounter some sort of conflict, that I'm willing to support them, coach them, develop them, and make sure that they have what they need to be successful. That's a really important part. And for students, um, I think that sense of connection is really important. Um, in Spring, in Springfield, we are doing something called the Primary Person Model. And it's where every kid is connected with an adult. So we're piloting it in some schools. Every kid needs a champion. So how do we connect a kid with an adult to be their advocate? To be somebody that they can turn to, somebody that they can rely on? So for me, that was so important as a way to address conflict. They know who they can go to, right? Because sometimes kids don't feel comfortable reaching out to somebody or they might not know who to go to. How do we make those connections, make kids feel like they have somebody in their corner? So that's something where I'm, I'm proud of and work that's going really well. And it's helped address conflict because, you know, kids are going to their trusted adult in the building and knowing that they have somebody.
Thank you. Um, I, do you have follow-ups? Go ahead.
Um, I think, yeah, that was really, that was a great answer. Um, sometimes we have conflict between students or between students and families outside of school that then affects, um, the experience in school. And I'm just wondering kind of what your approach is to dealing with that, that kind of scenario?
Yeah, what happens outside of school does impact the culture in the school. So I think addressing that as, as an administrator is very important and to make sure that we're comfortable reaching out to families and saying, you know, "Hey, this happened outside of school, you know, but it does have an impact on what's happening inside our school." So making sure that you're reaching out to those families and addressing that. I think that constant communication and I think, you know, we also need to become more confident in reaching out to families when good things are happening as well, right? To, you know, I, as a parent myself, I'm like, "See, the school, right? The school is calling, right?" So how do we take away that anxiety from parents and, you know, and let them know that when the school is calling, it was like, there's a chance it could be for something amazing? So, and, you know, that has happened, right? And you've been pleasantly surprised, but I think it's great that, you know, we're making sure we have consistent communication so that when you do call a family about something that happened outside of school, they're not like, "Oh, what does this mean?" Or, you know, that you're just making sure that they know because, you know, they might not know either. Or, you know, I think it's important to just keep everybody in the loop and keep everybody sort of aware of what's happening. And in, that you're willing to address things because it does impact academics. And it becomes barriers. And we need to do everything we can to remove barriers for kids.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You're going to move on. Your question's for you, Linda?
So, um, you just spoke a little bit about engaging with students and families. I am a big advocate of it. We, it is our responsibility as a community. These, these children have been trusted to us. So describe the methods by which you engage with students, families and the larger community. Um, then what do you find effective and meaningful? Why do you, what do you aim to achieve through this engagement? And how do you ensure equitable, um, reach across the population and employ cultural competency and inclusion?
I'm excited to share a little bit about the work that we've done in my current district around the Portrait of a Graduate because I think that just speaks to the power of bringing people together in service of children. Um, the Portrait of a Graduate was an initiative that we took on to help create our vision for our district. And we had focus groups. We did surveys. We went to faith-based organizations. We went to the community. We went to, um, we went to dance halls. We went everywhere to get, to find out. We asked- We asked parents and community members, we talked to students too and teachers. Like, what are your hopes and dreams for kids? And what knowledge and skills do they need to possess by the time they graduate to make sure that they're successful, not only while they're with us, but after they're with us? So that work was so transformative to me as a leader and something I'm so proud of because we ended up with this vision. And when I see this vision, I see the entire community. It's just so incredible to see the voices of 2,500 people sort of jumping off the page. That was co-created. It was the first time we ever engaged in my district in co-creating a vision for the district. And that just ensures buy-in, right? We did it in a very authentic way. They felt like, the community felt like they were involved and that they also created it. So we're talking about our vision. It is, it is the community's vision. It's not just about that. So I think opening that dialogue between central office staff, between families, community members was just so powerful. And as a result of that, and just hearing from the student voice was just so incredible during that time. And really, all right, how do we do more with the students? Because at the end of the day, it's all about them, just like you said. And how do we make sure their voices are heard? So we did these things called student summits. And we brought kids together from all across the district and we asked them questions. Again, how's it going? What do we need to do to better in this district? You know, how do you feel when you get a grade? How is your mental health? We asked them, they went into focus groups. We had students facilitating these conversations with each other. And we were process observers during this time. We sat back, we didn't say anything, we just were note-takers. And hearing the kids talk about their experiences in schools and how we need to do better by them was just incredible. And we had students from, you know, our international academy, so the school, you know, just making sure that equal representation was there because for us it mattered. Everybody had, it wasn't just our, you know, kids on student council were there. It would, we said, we need, we need all, we need representation from every kid. We need the kids that aren't coming. We need to hear from them because we need to remove those barriers. So we did that. And what was amazing, they said, you know, we can't learn without relationships. And we, we are not, we cannot hear you if we don't think you care about us. So that's, out of that came the primary person model. The kids told us. And, you know, we brought them back together and we said, you know what? We changed our district priorities because of what you said. And they're like, you listened to us? And you actually changed what you're doing because of something we said? And even when they were sitting in front of us, they're like, I think this is the first time anybody asked me how school was going and how we can change schools. So I think that was something, really speaks to the power of leaning into student voice, leveraging that student voice, and having student voices drive the process. And, you know, bringing in that larger community to help support the work because we can't do it alone. We know we can't do it alone. When we're all working together, it's always better. And there's more opportunities for kids. And, you know, we are also doing a survey for parents. We do one for parents, families, staff, students. And in those surveys, we're asking them questions about, you know, do they feel like their students feel like they belong? Would you recommend your school to somebody else? You know, do you have, our kids, do you feel like your kids have access to opportunities in school, before school, after school? We're asking them. And we use that data to make decisions about our budget, about programming, and that's an important part of it. We also, we do student, we do parent focus groups as well, family caregiver focus groups. That's an important part of our work because we want to make sure that we have representation from everybody. Because we have to shift from this like come-if-you-call approach to education, but to meet people where they are and how they need to communicate, how they effectively communicate. So we have to increase opportunity and frequency and ways in which we communicate. Because it can't be just because I called you, I need you to come down. We have to think about it a little bit differently to maintain that cultural competence.
Are there any, any follow-up questions to this about community and reach out?
Moving to you, Ben. No?
I feel pretty stoked for bed.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, you hit a lot of key points that were certainly, that speak to me and speak to my heart. And again, I feel that we, as a community, work together to educate our children.
We find a lot of feelings in this group.
There's a lot of feelings.
Moving on to question four, Sam.
Yes. The question is, how would you define the purpose of special education? And then describe examples of how you ensure that students with disabilities and their families can access the full life of the school in both academic and non-academic contexts?
Yeah, so for me, special education is about making sure that every student experiences high-quality educational experiences and that we are addressing their needs, their individual needs. And for me, I think a shift in, we talked about this a little bit earlier, is moving from compliance-driven special education to supportive special education program. I think, you know, we often think we have to do this, we have to do that. And thinking about approaching special education from really looking at a student and their needs and how are we going to meet their needs in a way that works for them? I started off as a special education educator, was a special education department chair. I got my master's degree in special education. So special education is very near and dear to my heart. And when we do special education well, everybody benefits. And we can unlock every kid's unlimited potential when we are meeting their needs. And I think, you know, the new IEP process, thinking about that and how it centers around a student and thinking about how we even approach IEP meetings for families. I think it's really important that we shift to, you know, what, from that asset orientation lens for special education. And I saw that you have a can-do pack, which is awesome because it is about what kids can do. We have to stop thinking about it from what kids can't do. And, you know, it's very unique to be sitting in an IEP meeting as a parent and thinking about, you come to a room, you're with professionals who are using sort of EDGASPEAK acronyms. And, you know, how do parents feel when they're coming in? You're talking about their kid during this meeting and their scores and their, you know, and the shift to the new IEP process, I think aligns to what my beliefs about the educational process or the special ed process is like, you know, that we have a whole person, we have a whole amazing kid in front of us. Let's talk about who they are as a person, who they are as a learner, who they are academically, socially, behaviorally. Because that paints a picture, that tells the story. We need to talk, start talking about kids as a story and about their life. They're, you know, we can't approach an IEP meeting with just student work samples and data. And yes, that is part of it, but, you know, we're so much more than just data and we're so much more than just a student work sample. You know, how has that student grown? How have we met their needs? How are we coming together as a team to address that? It's very important. And I think when, you know, that cultivates that sense of belonging, that's so important. I was at a large comprehensive high school and scheduling was a big thing around special education. And we got, when we got scheduling right, it was so good for special education students. So we had like a college prep course, we'd have a sort of an inclusion classroom and a sub-separate classroom scheduled at the same time. So kids can move fluidly, right? They can, you know, there are times, there are opportunities where kids can move into an inclusion setting because it might be a higher interest area for them. Or it might, you know, you have to make those decisions. And when we make those decisions, kids win. Because, you know, we're being, we're not being stuck in our ways because kids, kids have opportunities. And there might be something happening, you know, during that time, kids going, well, all right, let's push them into inclusion, let's support them here. And then just making sure that we're flexible and nimble enough as, as an organization and as a community to be able to make those shifts because they're, they're good for kids. And, you know, in some of our high schools, we have integrated programs and our life skills kids are coming into regular college courses. And it's amazing to see. It is just truly incredible to see kids working together. And kids rise to the occasion that we set for them. I truly believe that. And to see, you know, somebody drops something, kids just helping out each other in, in just a seamless way because they've created that culture. And we have to create that culture first, right? Acceptance, belonging, those are foundational, those have to be your core beliefs. Because when people feel welcome and they feel like they belong, that's when, you know, you'll unlock their full potential.
No.
Oh, no. Just the doorway, I'm sorry, your motion.
This is a great example of how we conserve energy.
I did hear the bills to light up Mountain View are pretty excessive.
You should have seen what white work was like.
Okay.
We knew it was coming too.
I know. It happens every night and we act surprised.
Right back. We are surprised.
Acceptance and belonging are foundational and core values.
And go.
You were, it seemed like you were completing a thought. Did, were you?
Ooh, you know.
No? I have a, I have a follow-up if that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless you have more. I'm just here to offer some scaffolding. If the lights interrupted your flow of thought.
Why don't you go ahead with your follow-up, Mark?
Yeah, go right ahead.
All right. Um, we've had some discussions in our committee that were centered around, you know, we were supportive as a body of the removal of the 10th grade MCAS as a graduation requirement. But we wanted to be sure that every time we communicated that support, that we offered the caveat and discussed the nuance of the impact that it will have on admittedly a small population, but a population of special education students that are at a higher grade level, they're going to be 10th, 11th, 12th graders and beyond. And I'm just curious to hear what you think about that impact on those students who may pass that, or, you know, where the non-passing of the MCAS allowed them to kind of gain access to some additional years of schooling, where that automatic kind of protection and additional support for them may not exist in the same way anymore. And just how you view our responsibility to special education students that might already, you know, would be the equivalent of a 13th or 14th grader, but just, you know, really need just a little bit of extra time to fully prepare them for a full.
Maybe they've met their academic requirements for graduation, but they haven't quite met the, they still require some additional support. They're not quite ready to go to work or go to school without additional support.
Well said, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's like, we're building programs that meet their needs in the schools. I think that's essential. And, you know, I think we have an obligation to those kids to make sure that they're successful, whether they're graduating, whether they're leaving, to make sure that we have programming available for them and that we're creating schedules for them. And that it is something that is their right to have those, it's their right to have that vocational programming or, you know, however, whatever their needs are, that we're making sure that we're meeting them. Because again, it's about the greater good, right? Where it's about the community and how the community's impact is going to be and every kid matters. And when we're meeting, you know, we're giving that extended learning opportunity for those kids, it benefits everybody. So I think regardless of, you know, what transpires and they're deserving of the opportunity for, to continue to make sure that, you know, when they do leave the high school, that they are ready and that they have the skills that they need. And whether that's an extra year, then you're a student for another year and we're going to provide you with those opportunities and those supports that you need to make sure that you're successful.
So without that parachute of MCAS, you see that as being a policy, a carefully crafted policy on the district level? How do we, do we leave it to discretion special ed director? Like, how do you see the implementation of something like that?
I think that would be Dr. Lively. I think that would be something, you'd have to work very closely to make sure, you know, it's staffing towards resources as well. But I think it's our duty and obligation to make sure that those kids get those experiences.
Does anybody else have any other follow-ups? Thank you so much.
We're going to move on. Question five.
All right. Regarding assessment of students and evaluations of staff, what are your preferred tools and methods to gather data for various groups and across grade levels? Discuss how you use that data to inform choices around curriculum, programming, and staffing, and specifically how you'd apply that in districts such as ours.
I, I spoke to it a little bit, right? And I think assessment data is important. And I think it does help us make decisions. I think that, you know, it's one aspect, right? But I think you have two screeners, you have an ELA math screener. I think that, you know, gives us data about interventions and staffing that will be really important. I think regardless of, you know, what tools that you're using, you need tools that give the right data at the right time and that you're making, because sometimes I feel like we're data-rich but action-poor, right? We have a lot of data, but what are we doing with that data? And how is that data informing our instruction? So thinking about what kids need and what the data is telling us to provide those supports. You know, thinking about tier-two supports, I think, for kids and tier-three to make sure that, you know, we have the tools and resources for those kids to meet them where they are and to push their learning. And I think every assessment that we give kids has to have a purpose. And if it does not serve a purpose, then I don't know why we're doing it. Because kids encounter a lot of assessments and we need to make sure that they're not feeling the burden of those assessments. And, you know, we're using the data that we do have, whether it's unit assessment data, right? How are we using those as benchmarks to figure out what kids know? How are we using informal assessments at the end of class? How am I gauging? All right, did, did I meet the lesson objective for the day? Did I do, did, what I taught translate into learning? I think those are really important. And when you have a really good sense of that as an educator, you know, that is assessment data and that's, that should be used to guide instruction. So I think it has to be clear, it has to be purposeful, and we have to be, whenever we engage in an assessment, it has to have a clear purpose. And I think that is very essential. I think, you know, it also helps shape your MTSS. And I, I really believe that when you have a strong multi-tiered systems of support, it not only tells you what to expect, but it tells families what to expect. It tells, you know, I think when you are leaning into those MTSS supports, you're trying to design classrooms that meet the needs of all kids because that's really important. How are we meeting the needs of all of our kids in the classroom? And knowing our data, using that data effectively tells a story about students. I think, you know, using, and curriculum and academics is one aspect, right? We get data from students all the time. And I think we need to not think about data so narrowly, right? It's not just numbers. What are kids saying? What are they feeling? What are our referral rates look like? What are our communication with parents? Those are all, those are data. And we need to really think about those and how are those driving our decision-making and our priorities as a district? For staffing, I think we look at data, we look at evaluation data. I saw that 100% of your educators are evaluated, that's great. And, you know, in talking with the high school principal, assistant principal, how are we, you know, evaluating educators in a way that's developing them? Again, another set of data. What are we constantly giving feedback on as an administrative team that drives PD? If we're giving feedback on the same thing, okay, we know there's a need. So now we address that for professional development. So thinking about data strategically and having, when you're looking at data, to serve a purpose as well. I think at the end of the day, you know, it's not just about collecting the data, it's about using it effectively and using it in a way to benefit kids that we're not looking at assessment punitively as well. Like, you know, we're, it's a, it's a moment in time, but it's a moment in time that tells you what kids are learning and what unfinished learning we need to address. I think it's really important that, you know, we are addressing grade level standards, right? Because it's really important. But when we see that there might be a gap, that we're going back and addressing that gap. Because the further we get, the gap widens. And we just have to make sure that we don't see those gaps widening. And speaking of gaps, I think that's another data point that you need to take into Um, and speaking of gaps, I think that's another data point that you need to take into consideration. When you have a gap in your data, that tells you that there is an inequity happening. And that inequity needs to be addressed, need to uncover, need to find the root cause of that. And I think for me as somebody who just got their doctorate and spent a lot of time and data and research, making sure that you're using data to make small incremental changes is something that I is I I believed in before, but now I it is solidified in my mind that you have a data, you identify a cause. And you take a look at what you're going to do about it, small step and repeat the cycle again. And that's how you really use data to inform your work. And I think that when you do that strategically, you do it thoughtfully, you do it well, you'll see progress. And because I think when you make sweeping changes, it doesn't really, it doesn't land with people. You know, you're trying to do all the things, all the time, all at once. But if you start slow and lead to incremental progress, you're gonna you're gonna see awesome things happen faster. You gotta go slow to go fast.
So anyone have any follow up questions? I don't think I have any follow up questions. I just want to thank you for addressing the data we do have, but also highlighting that data we don't have. Those gaps is so important, just um.
Thank you.
All right, next question six from Ben.
Hi. Discuss your views on the successful integration of technology into teaching and learning across grade levels. How do you balance the clear need for digital literacy while still maintaining a focus on improving critical thinking and encouragement of creative self-expression? What are the greatest benefits of and areas of concern around technology as it impacts education?
Right, great question. Key word there, I think, is balance. And when you find the right balance, I think it's where the kids benefit, right? They need access to 21st century skills, right? They need to be critical thinkers, they need to access technology, but we have to do it in a way that doesn't detract from learning. And um in my current district, we have a CS for All initiative. So what we we had teachers create modules that address the digital literacy, computer science standards. You know, I think it's really important that kids know how to be good digital citizens because that's the world in which we live. Digital citizenship is really important. And I don't think kids fully understand the implications of social media and in the internet. And it's our responsibility to teach them how to be good digital citizens. Um, but we also know that we have, you know, science standards to address and ELA. But how do we do it in a way where we're combining the two? So we created these modules where you're sprinkling in a little bit of the digital literacy, computer science standards into ELA, into math. And was it a lift? Yeah, but it was great work and kids are getting access because we know that they need that. Um, and I think the way in which we also use technology is important. And there's a model, it's called the SAMR model. And it's about substitution is where you take, you know, you have a computer and you're taking this computer and you're just like instead of you're typing in a Word document. You're just sub you're just substituting. Augmentation is where you sort of change the task, but you're still basically just using it for substitution purposes. Multiplication, you're changing a little bit, but where we really want to where like the amazingness happens is the the redefinition process where you're taking technology and you're using it to transform your classroom. And you're giving kids access to opportunities that didn't exist before technology. And that's where we really see the benefits of technology. And that's where, you know, in our classrooms, that's the sweet spot where we want to see things happening, like going on virtual field trips. If we're talking to people across the country, we're talking to people across the globe. Those are the powerful experiences kids need in our classrooms. You know, we know that they're accessing technology when they leave our schools all the time, right? But how do we as a district and as educators transform that for them? And that's again where we really want to see and get teachers familiar with, right? It's a lift. There are some people who love technology and there are some people who are like, nope, I am not a technology person. And that's okay. But where can we identify teachers who love technology and leverage them as our champions? You love techno, okay, that's great. So let's create a like a a module or a unit or a project where you can thrive. And again, that builds leadership. That builds like joy and excitement for that teacher. So how do we lean into our experts in our classrooms who love technology to be able to support some of that work?
Thank you. Um, follow ups?
Um, I have a follow up. Thank you. Um, I had never heard of that SAMR model before, so I'm gonna look more into that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Um, what do you think about? I'm I'm curious to hear kind of what you've encountered in regards to um using AI in a school setting. And I know like there's been MASC has put out some policies. We haven't really quite had the chance to dive into that that here, but I just have a feeling that um that's gonna become a bigger topic in the next few years. So be curious to hear your thoughts.
So I think when I'm not afraid of, you know, AI, all right, if you can help me write this better.
I am, but continue.
Okay, I sorry for AI in terms of, you know, just how we could use it in the classroom, I think.
Yeah.
That that's yes.
Yes.
That turn that AI. But I think when, you know, we're um thinking about teaching kids how to use it and when to use it um is very important, right? There you can use it for some things, but, you know, we really want to have kids writing, reading and relying on their their gifts and talents first. And then, you know, exploring ways. And, you know, there is some amazing things that AI can do. It can write songs and help kids express who they are. They you can ask AI to generate a picture. Some kids aren't good artists. So if you can have, you know, a a computer aided use of, you know, drawing, it's amazing. Kids get to express themselves through art in that way, and I think that's powerful. And I think some kids are, you know, maybe just not comfortable speaking, but they're they're happy to talk to a computer and they're happy to help like have a partner in AI. So I think there are some things that are really good. But I think it's all about making sure that kids know the parameters and know when to use it. Um, and, you know, you're not gonna have AI generate a paper, right? Because, you know, you need to be expressing your own thoughts and ideas. And we wanted, because for me, I think when we're asking kids to write a paper, if they can have AI generate it, it's not of high quality.
Yeah.
Right? We want to make sure that when we ask kids to write a paper, it's they're reflective, they're synthesizing. We want them to reach those higher levels of blooms. We don't want them to just be able to spit something out that AI can generate. So I think it's also speaks to what we're asking kids to produce. So that's balance, but there there should be some policy. I think we're we're in the middle of drafting some policy about the US the use of AI because if you're not clear, if you don't have a policy, kids are gonna do it. So how are you gonna be clear about what is appropriate and what is not and when to use it and when not to? So yes, policy for sure.
Thank you. Well done answer.
Yeah. Yeah.
All set?
Well done.
All right. There's a big one. The questions have been, well, they're all big, yeah, they're all big. Yeah, what is the basketball last? Finance. Question number seven. Describe your experience in developing and managing a comprehensive school district budget, including considerations for both recurring and capital expenses. In a district such as ours, which has maintained level services in recent years, but has a keen appetite for the expansion of programming, discuss how you might access funding for that and what that potential timeline might look like.
All right, so I currently oversee a budget of 21 million for my department. So um and I have 11 directors that have various contents and they all have grants, payrolls. So uh the the budget aspect, I'm from very comfortable with, you know, 21, $24 million budget. Um, currently how I'm operating. Um, I think, you know, the the great part about that is is um you're, I think, when you develop a budget, you're making sure that you align your budget to your district priorities. See, that's where you have to start. Because, you know, when you think about the budget, it's a document, it reflects your priorities. It reflects what you value. And I don't think people really, you know, take that into consideration. When you're presenting a budget, it lets the community know where you're investing. And I think that's something that, you know, you're like, wow, that's powerful. So the not only the power behind the budget, but what it sent, what message it sends to the community. So you have to be very considerate in your budget and to make sure that it does align with your priorities. So when I I go through a process with my team right now, I'm developing a budget. And they come to me with our budget. And this is the same thing that you would do, you know, in a with a school. You develop your budget, make sure that there's input from families, teachers, staff and students. Because that's how you develop a budget that is responsive to your community and responsive to your priorities. That budget gets developed. I get the budget and I say, all right, this aligns with the priorities. I'm not sure about this one. Well, I'm gonna ask a follow up question on that um because I want to make sure that we're consistent in that what we've set as our priorities, we're addressing through our budget. And then, you know, just making sure that, you know, we don't have anything in there. It's just, oh, this is because the way we've always done them. Well, you know, if we are, we have different priorities. There are things, there has to be some give and take and to make sure that we are being really reflective in our budget process and that we are analyzing every aspect of the budget and thinking about how this impacts kids. And you're gonna make your budget decisions based on children. So based on adults, we are here to educate children and our budget needs to reflect that. I think for um so making sure that there's community input. And once I develop that budget, you have to you have to put it out there. You have to really be working closely with your budget department. This work doesn't happen in isolation either when you're developing your budget and prioritizing. Um, finance subcommittee should also eat your part of the budget. We work together and it's very important that everybody is at the table, making sure that we're not only sharing what our priorities are, but holding each other accountable to that budget. That's very important to me. And I think when you do that, you're everybody becomes really clear on what the priorities are and in transparency in that process. Because if you don't know what I have in my budget, that doesn't feel good to you, right? If you're like, where did this come from? I, as a superintendent, want you to know that whatever is in the budget, we've talked about, we've addressed. You know, you're very familiar with and you're on board with as a a school committee because that's what's important. And, you know, when you feel like things aren't done transparently and that there are things that are in the budget that don't align to a priority, you know, that's where conflict or, you know, some tension arises. So I think it's important that there are those conversations that happen um in that, you know, when the budget does come together, that you do propose it to the community and that you do have input from the community. Does this feel like it represents who we are as the community and what we value? And we do that in my current district and it's been great. We've gotten some amazing feedback from the community and it has also helped us increase buy in. They're like, oh, I see that you might have a budget shortfall here. I'm willing to help you shore up that gap. It's been great. We've had people come and they're like, oh, we didn't know you did that and we didn't know that you'd be willing to help us. So that's been something that's been powerful. And it also again increases transparency, like, you know, and you hear like, we can't afford that. But I think when people see the budget, like, no, no, we really, when we say we can't afford that, we really mean we can't afford that. So I it's not just something that we're saying that we are hiding this money, it that it's very done very transparently. So I think that's very important, which leads me to like, okay, so if you have a very tight budget, what do you do? And I think it's important that you, you know, are reaching out to um to partnerships and reaching out to foundations and philanthropic organizations. I've had the opportunity to work with some amazing philanthropic organizations and I think that's something I could bring to the district, those partnerships, those experiences, that grant funding um because it's really important. And when you have a tight budget and you have kids that have unmet needs, how are you going to get there? And that is the part, that's something I work very hard to make sure that we have an answer to those unanswered questions. And grants is something that, you know, I approach every grant application. There's a lot of grants. Jesse puts out a lot of grants, but there's two parts of the grant process. You have to have somebody that's like willing to do the work and then it has to be sustainable. Like what happens? And sometimes you lose sight of that, but what happens after the money goes away? Well, you have somebody who has a job and that person is impacted by your decision. So being very thoughtful in that process and which grants you go for and how they impact the budget later on. So I think that's also really important. So, you know, while grants are good for some things, I think when you think about grants for personnel, it becomes a lot trickier. Or if you have grants that support programming and the programming is going great and you're like, great, but the grant is over and now we loved this program and it's gone. It's like feels like a little bit of a rug pull for people. So I think we have to be very intentional about, you know, how we shape the budget. I think would you lean into philanthropic organizations, community partnerships, community foundations? I saw that you have the Elf, like, it's amazing.
It is.
So exciting. And how so how do you leverage those community partnerships to 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 get get what you need in East Hampton? Yeah, and to make sure that kids are benefiting. So um I think that's, I think approaching the budget, transparency, but being creative too. And I think it's important, you know, just some of the budget items, thinking about deeply special education programming and the cost of special education programming, transportation are all areas that you really need to be innovative. And talking to Dr. Lively and the central office team, we know that we have some kids that are gonna have some needs. So how do we work with other communities potentially to create like programming that addresses student specific needs? But if you're engaging with North Hampton or Holyoke or how do we come together as communities to pool resources to open a classroom to to make sure that we have those? So being innovative and having relationships with other communities is important. And, you know, throughout my experience, I've been able to ha- build great relationships with other community members. And I think that's some a strength that I bring to the table is those partnerships. You know, I'm coming from a large district, so, you know, bringing bringing those relationships and, you know, just knowing that, you know, along the way, you've met and made these connections with other people and they're positive connections that you can leverage as the superintendent. And it it helps, it makes a difference.
Does anyone have a follow up?
I almost did, but then you answered it.
I would love to hear more about how you um do the uh you said you represent the budget to the community and then parents are providing feedback and input on it. Um, I would love to hear more about how you do that.
So we we do publish it on our website. Um, we have a we have a survey that, you know, is open ended and, you know, people give feedback and they do. They that's one of our higher levels of interest because they're taxpayers' dollars, right? Tied to that and people are like, how are you spending my money? And I want to know how you're spending it. Um, and then we do focus groups. So we have parents come in, we talk about the budget, we talk about our priorities. And we have um even staff and students come in and we go over like, here's how we're spending the majority of our money for the upcoming year. How does this feel? And I think it's, you know, when you keep it very simple, you keep, you know, you're really just soliciting feedback to help shape that process.
Thank you, that sounds great. I love that idea. I have a piece of a question that's been kind of floating to me at every one of these questions and I'm just gonna ask it because I'm just curious. And I I have a feeling too that I think um I have a feeling I bet a lot of community members would ask you the same question if they had the opportunity. Um, you're coming from Springfield Public Schools and you've been there for the majority of your career, which is the third largest school district in the state. Um, I would love to hear you just talk for a few minutes about why East Hampton. That and and I think I've gotten teases of it when you talk about that individualized focus, but I don't want to speculate. I would love to just hear your thoughts.
That's a great question and somebody asked me that today and I think I think it is something, you're like, all right, there are 70 schools, 24,000 kids. Okay, um, but I you you did nail it and I, you know, I think, you know, you're trying to meet so many needs in such a large community. And I work really, really hard and for me, it's, you know, And for me, it's, you know, I, I feel like I want to see the fruits of my labor. And in a, in a large district, while you're making, you know, incremental change, it, it is hard to see, you know, sort of the, the positive impact that you have. And I think when you're talking about a small, tight-knit community, you can see the impact of your work. And, you know, just going around with superintendent today and having the kids like, hi superintendent, oh, I'm over here. Oh, are you gonna have lunch with us? And I was, I was like, oh, that's so amazing. And to feel that sense of community. And even after leaving the screening interview, I was like, that felt really good. And that didn't feel like an interview. That felt like a place where I can be me and my authentic self. And I think sometimes it's great to be in a place where people know you and know how you operate and how, what drives you and motivates you in, in a small, tight-knit community. And people can feel like they can pick up the phone. And I do miss those close relationships. You know, coming from a school, I had amazing relationships with teachers. And I, I had a team and it was us. It was us against everybody. And I loved that. And that's where I really felt like I was with people who had my back, who supported me, who, we were all working together. And that feels good. And then you go to, you know, central office. And it's just like one stepped, you know, one step removed. You know, 33 elementary schools, it's hard to get around. It, and I love engaging with people. I love engaging with kids. And it's hard to not know a kid's name, for me. Like, I'm like, oh, I wish I remembered your name. I wish I could call your name out right now when I saw you in the hallway. So that personal connection with people is something that I would really love to get back to.
I mean, you hit on it. You mentioned the 100% graduation rate. And I think we are a committee and in a community that feels like anything less than that is a failure. Like, we're not gonna be satisfied until, and that's across the spectrum. That's our special ed students, that's our EL students, that's expansion of preschools. So every kid, every family wants their kid in preschool, we want that kid in preschool. Every, every kid, a path to graduate, you know? Absolutely. Anyone else? Um, we would love, if you have any closing statements, we'd love to hear your thoughts. This was a pleasure. And, um, yeah, go ahead.
I think you, you did sum it up a little bit. I've been in Springfield for 20 years. And I mentioned this at my screening. This is the first time I've interviewed ever outside of my district, ever, ever, ever. So for me, it was when I went to my screening interview, I was like, I haven't interviewed, I think, since I was 23, like, for a job outside of Springfield. So, um, I think that speaks to my commitment and my intentionality and what I choose to do. I will engage in work that fulfills me, that feels like it fits for me. And I'm not gonna, in, I'm not gonna do anything that doesn't bring me joy or that I feel confident that I can do. So I think, you know, I really want you to know that I take commitment very seriously. I'm a very, very hard-working individual. And, you know, just going through the schools, I see myself here. I see myself as part of the community. I feel like, you know, I could spend a long time here. And it felt very good to be part of, um, smiling faces and being brought around and people like, nice to meet you. I was, oh, it's great to meet other people. And I mentioned before, um, I have four stepchildren. And I've spent like decades on soccer sidelines, lacrosse, football, dance sidelines, cheering my kids on. And, you know, I think that Rita Pearson, if anybody has, has a TED Talk, Rita Pearson, every kid needs a champion, like, that is me. I, I am a Rita Pearson fan, and I believe that. And when you feel like you have somebody cheering you on from the sidelines who is invested in your success, I think that's where it just becomes so powerful and those relationships matter. And, you know, I, I am that person cheering people on on the side. And I would love to bring my skills, gifts, talents to East Hampton and cheer on everybody, be part of, you know, all of the amazing things that are happening after school, before school, during school, being visible. The kids are, they are gonna hold you accountable for being present in the school. And I loved that because accountability also matters to me. And I'm true to my word. And if they want to see me, I want to see them. And I think it's great when, you know, we're empowering kids to feel like they're a part of something and that they're willing to hold the superintendent accountable too. I, I was like, I'm here for this. This feels very good. Um, and I think, again, I mentioned, you know, the values that I hold very much align with the values of this community, inclusion, equity, and that sense of belonging. And I, I think that, um, I'm excited about the possibility to be part of the next successful chapter.
Bravo. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the cameras, uh, motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait, you know, before we do that, let me just, quick notes of public for the four people who might watch this in its entirety. I hope it's more than that. Um, we will be convening at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, December 17th. We expect the first 30 minutes to be a lot of boring housekeeping. And then we are going to recess if we finish that up early, because at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, the 17th, we will open up the public speak uh, related to the superintendent search. We would love to hear the public's comments. You can email us ahead of time, you can show up in person, you can attend remotely and offer your thoughts. Following that public speak, uh, we will then move into our public conversation and deliberations. And, uh, my intention is to adjourn that meeting by 9:00 PM. So we will either have a decision that evening by 9:00 PM or we will conclude at 9:00 PM and reconvene the following day, 6:00 PM on Wednesday, the 18th. So stay tuned. Motion to adjourn, please?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Sam, second.
Second.
Thank you, Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hosts, stenches? Motion carries. Good evening and thank you so much.